We will call the workshop meeting, the Carmel Clay School Board to order. Madam Secretary, roll call.
All board members are present this evening.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge. Thank you. Before we move to consent, I'd like to thank everyone who has worked so hard to make the first two days of school great for our students. We know that it takes a lot of effort to get all the students to the schools, from the schools, in the schools, fed, and all those details that are very important. We will move next to consent. May I have our motion to approve items on consent?
No move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, we will now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion to approve consent passes. Next, we will move to the workshop topic. I think we're going to move down, but before, do you have anything to say, or?
No, we're ready to jump right in. So we've got some preparation set up for you there, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Woodward, who is going to lead us through a school safety update, and also some of the school safety layers, and finally, some recommendations. So we'll hand it over to Dave once we get settled down there on the floor.
We'll try something different here. Okay. Okay, well, I'll dive right in. I guess, first of all, it's, I guess I'll take it as a compliment that on day two, talking school safety, the room was packed full of angry people. So I'm hoping that that means that we're doing something right. I'm going to give you guys an overview of some updates. I'm not going to give a comprehensive school safety overview for a couple of different reasons. Number one, you're all very familiar with the topic. So there's really not much point in kind of rehashing what we do with regards to cameras, and radios, and background checks, and all of those things. So we're going to focus on some of the newer things, really just within the last six months or so. The other thing is, we're going to give kind of a mile-high view of what we do, because to kind of get into the weeds of everything would not be in our best interest with regards to safety, and school safety plans are exempt from public disclosure. In this being a public meeting, we're going to avoid that. So we're going to give kind of a mile-high view of what we do. But I'm going to start talking about our school safety specialists. Now, we've had school safety specialists for a while. We have 24 of them throughout the school corporation. These are people who've completed at least five days minimum training with regards to school safety. They get the basics, and they do two days every year of updates. But what we have done in the last six months is kind of aligned our school safety specialists. We're now going to be meeting monthly this year, and so we're aligning throughout the corporation what we're doing, so we're sharing best practices with one another and lessons learned. So if someone has dealt with something within the last month within their school, it's important that we share what went well and what didn't, especially with each other. The other thing we did with our school safety specialists is we utilized them to update our safety plans. We actually brought a team together to review every building plan and create a new template. So all of the school buildings have a new school safety template that they're using this year. They also have quick guides, which is basically a quick reference, one pager that they can look at, because there's really not much point in having a giant safety plan in an immediate crisis. You need very quick reference. We've created quick references. We also have created after-hours templates, because if there's anything we learned from our own explosion, we have a lot of people in our buildings who may not be familiar with our buildings and the safety protocols within. And so, just to point out, for example, severe weather. Most of our people don't know where the safe locations are within their buildings. When I was reviewing plans for the state, a lot of times I would hear that, like, a track coach would take kids into the gymnasium during severe weather. It's not where you want to be. It's a large span roof, and it's one of the most dangerous places to be. But most people don't know that. So on these quick guides or after-hours templates, we actually will specify exactly where the location is in regards to where the sign is posted. So in areas where we have a lot of outside groups using our facilities, these are being posted this year. We also have updated a reunification plan. Actually, not updated. We created a reunification plan, because really what we have to do, we have to be prepared to take all of our kids from one school to somewhere else for a variety of reasons: hazardous materials, violence, any kind of random crisis like an explosion. If this were to have happened during a school day, we would have had very likely to take our students from that building and release them to their parents somewhere else. So I want to talk a little bit about that. A lot of people think the law enforcement will actually handle that. It's just not accurate. The law enforcement, they own the crime scene. Our firemen will own any accidents and injuries. We still own those kids. It's still on us to get those kids back to the right parent. So we've identified several confidential reunification locations throughout the county, and we've worked with the management of each of these locations. They're very aware of what our plan is. We have MOUs with each of them, memorandum of understanding with each of them. We have emergency contact numbers for each of them. Redundant emergency contact numbers, meaning more than one. Just in case we can't get a hold of one person, we can get a hold of another. And again, we have multiple locations. What this looks like, and I'm going to give a very quick review, and this is not one of our facilities, but what you really need to do is find an off-site location. You need to be able to sequester your students in a location away from parents, because as soon as a parent sees their kid, they're taking them, because they're anxious. It's traumatic. But what we need to do is make sure the right parent gets to the right kid, but we need to do it quickly. We need to be very efficient, and we need to do it in a calm manner, because they've already been through trauma, and we can't re-traumatize them in the reunification. It should be something that they're very much looking forward to, and that goes smoothly. So, a couple of the things that we've done with this, we basically have trained our own staff at ESC to launch a reunification if needed. We have five Chromebooks that are loaded every two weeks with student information, so we know the most up-to-date within that two weeks, who needs to be released to who, who their emergency contacts are, et cetera. We chose Chromebooks, because a typical battery life is about eight hours, and by downloading this information, we're able to basically conduct our own reunification without Wi-Fi or without electricity. So we could still go through this if it's a natural disaster. One of the things I like to say is that we prepare for the worst. My goal is that I never, ever have to use a reunification plan here at Carmel Clay Schools, but I don't get paid for that. I get paid to think about the worst possible thing. And let's talk about the worst possible thing. Worst possible thing is an injury where we're looking at possible fatality. And so what we've done throughout our school corporation is, within the last six months, actually, I'll go back. The young lady in Noblesville who was shot just over a year ago. Her life was saved, because they had specific equipment, both the nurse and the SRO, and they responded very quickly, and they used this equipment very efficiently to save this young girl's life. So, within the last six months here, every nurse, every SRO, every school administrator, and tonight, every school board member is going to get a Stop the Bleed kit. Now, all of our safety specialists, SROs, nurses, et cetera, have had extensive training with it. We actually had the health department come out, and the fire department come out, and do two separate sessions with our staff. Well, one of the keys to this is it has to be readily accessible, it has to be easy to use. So we have them throughout the buildings with all of these people, our administrators, SROs, nurses, et cetera, but we also have one at every AED location. So as long as our staff knows where the AED is, they know how and where to access the Stop the Bleed kit. Now, it's not necessarily rocket science, how to use a Stop the Bleed kit, but what it is, is confidence. You have to be confident in what you have and what you're able to use. So if every one of you would grab your Stop the Bleed kit and rip it open, in there we have trauma dressing, we have compressed gauze, we have gloves. Yeah, they should all have been started at least a little bit.
(inaudible)
They've learned that if you don't start the bag already?
Yeah.
That's exactly right. In fact, before we leave today, actually, or when you get home, each of these packages, you notice they're very slick, and they're very tight. I suggest pre-cutting them or pre-ripping them. Mine are pre-ripped, because what we learn, lessons learned, from our colleagues is, if you have blood on your hands, you are not going to be able to open these packages. They're going to be extremely slick. Now, I want every one of you to grab your tourniquet, because I think everyone here is going to have a pretty good idea of how to use the gauze and the compression. And I'm going to come over to you all. So, because we're recording this, we need the microphone still. So if you would take your tourniquet and unwrap it, you don't have to take it completely out of the, or whatever this would be called here. If you need to apply tourniquet, first thing you need to do, identify where the wound is. So I'm going to use the leg. So if my wound is at the knee, where would I want to apply tourniquet?
Above the knee.
Above the knee. Below is not going to do us any good, right? So let's imagine today, if one of my sudden wounds happened, and then I want to apply our tourniquet. So, you can easily, I'm just going to loop mine in for ease. And then, fasten. Pull it fairly tight, and then fasten above. Now, make sure you have the handle readily available, and then give it one twist. Did it tighten it?
Yep.
Yep. And if it's not too tight already, give it a second twist.
Very good.
And then you'll notice there's a latch.
Yeah.
Latch it in when you're coming to it. Now, of course, to attach a tourniquet, we need to get it as tight as possible. It's painful. It's extremely painful. In our case, we're not going to necessarily put that pain on ourselves, but you understand the basics, huh, Seth? The key is, how many of you knew how to use a tourniquet exactly like this before we did this right now? Tell us. I need to scout.
(laughing)
So, it's really about confidence. We know what we have, now we know how to use it, and it didn't take very long. Now, with our training with health department and fire department, we feel pretty exact with all types of bleeding, and how to use all of the equipment, but the most tricky, frankly, is the tourniquet. And in about two minutes, we all know how to use it. Confidence. Well-trained staff and student body to my mantra with regards to everything in school safety. And in two minutes, we all are confident in how to use the tourniquet.
And then, little light thing, is that supposed to go over that, so that it holds it in place?
Exactly. Yep. You, once it's tightened, you just latch it into that. Yes, and you hold it in place.
And ride with time you need it?
And you can ride with time you need it. Exact.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
I would like to point out that we did, we were able to put a Stop the Bleed kit on every AED in the district, thanks to a donation from the city council to the Carmel Clay Schools. They actually made the donation of $10,000 to the foundation, and then we can use that for really whatever we wanted to, and we chose to use that to put those in. And then later, after that, the health department came up and donated some more Stop the Bleed kits to it, so we were able to really accommodate the whole district very well through generosity.
Yep. And very appreciative of that. So we have Stop the Bleed kits all throughout the school corporation, and we provided training on the Stop the Bleed kits all throughout the school corporation. Now, again, you'll want to pre-cut your packages, because in a crisis, those will be very difficult to open if your hands are wet. Other things we've done just in the last six months, one thing we identified was difficulty in hearing the PA in certain areas of our school buildings. So we were able to install a blue revolving light, very similar to a siren, without the siren sound, but a blue light that will activate, usually about seven seconds, but we can lengthen it or shorten it depending on what we need, so it notifies everyone that an announcement is taking place. So, for example, if you're in the band room, and you can't hear over the band performing, the blue light comes on, you know then that there's an announcement going on. The other piece of that is training. We have to train our people who make the announcement for lockdown, that it needs to be repeated. Needs to be repeated over and over, because you're not going to get everyone quiet in a heartbeat. You need a second to do that. And so, we've done this in our elementary and middle schools, and we're working on high schools. We also have acquired a truck to help us with regards to managing traffic, particularly at the high school. They're able to get the cones and the signage out very quickly. They're able to respond to an incident very quickly. We didn't purchase a truck. I don't want anyone to think that. Thanks to Roger, we were able to repurpose a maintenance truck that was due to basically be retired, but we moved it to the high school. We have it, we're repurposing it with flashing lights right now and a label, because it's going to get low mileage. It's basically going to drive around that high school over and over. But it's going to be extremely valuable for us to get things going quickly in the mornings and the afternoons, and respond quickly when needed. Other things we're doing, we are working on some access control improvements. And I'm going to talk specifically about some areas. We are looking at reducing as much access to our buildings as we can. Now, this is a process. Now, I'm going to talk about the high school. We're talking about a building that is about six times larger than your typical public high school. Now, that's across the nation. This thing is massive, and we are working to segregate this as much as possible with regards to physical access. Now, we can talk about facilities all we want, and locks, and gates, et cetera, but to me, nothing beats a well-trained staff and student body. I have eyes all throughout that school, even after hours. That's what's important. So I've conducted an audit myself, and I wanted to share this. This is from a maintenance staff at one of our schools. Now, Tinesha notices some weird guy was here at the high school with his son. I'm the weird guy in question. My son and I decided, well, I decided, we're going to break into the high school, and someone's going to stop us. And they did. I had notified law enforcement in advance, so they knew not to come with sirens and whistles and everything else. Weapons drawn. I don't want to add that. But she was very quick, and I was extremely proud of her. So the next week, I showed up in her building. She thought she was in trouble, as I come walking through the building, and instead, I congratulated her in front of all of her peers and gave her a Subway gift card, because this is what I want, and this is what we need, and I was extremely glad that that is what we have.
Kind of like undercover boss, is that?
It's kind of like an undercover boss. Yeah. We're also adding physical structures. I don't think there's a lot of secret here. Some of our buildings, you used to go in the main doors, and you were suddenly in the hallway and had access throughout the building if you wanted. This has been going on throughout our corporation. Now, we have secure vestibules at the main access points, and there's more work going on there as well. Parent input is extremely important, and community input is extremely important. So within the last year, we've had a school safety academy for parents, where we use scenarios to get input from the parents, because we don't want to share our safety plans necessarily with everyone, but we do want their input. We need to know the outside perspective, and it gives us a new set of eyes on what we do. It's been extremely helpful. We've already utilized some of the input we received from our parents, and it's innovative. It was the only type of its kind in the state. It was, because now other schools are inquiring and starting to match this exact program. Parents, again, are so extremely important as stakeholders, so we have a parent resource center. We want to have a one-stop-shop, quick-reference point for our parents with regards to all types of situations. We already have videos up with what parents need to know about vaping, anonymous reporting, school bus safety. We even had tips to transition back to school for this last couple of weeks, and we have more videos on the way, including one on the lifeline law, social media, suicide prevention, and stress management. I want to point out, this is Stephanie Whiteside, our new mental health coordinator. And mental health is extremely important in our school corporation, and it's one of the things that we've made great strides with, and I think you're going to see some really incredible things over the next year and longer. We are seeking to improve our own tracking with regards to data. How many people are our social workers seeing? What issues are they seeing? And this can help us down the road with a grants, but also allocation of our resources that we currently have. What are the issues that we need to address stronger? We're going to have some consistent training. Again, we talked about that alignment throughout the school corporation. We want to make sure that everyone is capable of responding in a similar way, in the best way that they possibly can. We also want alignment with regards to social, emotional learning. We're working with the other school corporations in our county to have a county-wide mental health response team, because what we've seen and realized from lessons learned is, after a crisis, you're going to need a lot of counselors. You need a mental health response, so you're not re-traumatizing your students and staff. The problem is, bringing in counselors who are used to working with students and used to working with upset parents in this type of setting, that can be difficult. And so what we're doing is basically creating our own cadre, and we're all getting the same training, so we can, again, speak the same language. We know exactly what each other is doing and what we're capable of doing. So in a crisis, we can call out this group in a moment's notice and have boots on the ground from other school corporations. Suicide prevention, in the last six months, we have implemented QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer, throughout the school corporation. Every teacher in our school corporation, fifth grade and up, has received QPR training. I actually want to show you a quick video that I think explains this very well.
Research shows that the odds of surviving a heart attack in a public place are 10 times greater in regions where thousands of ordinary citizens are trained in CPR. It's called bystander rescue. When someone shows signs of experiencing cardiac arrest, the response of nearby friends, family, or coworkers is critical. The effective use of CPR doubles or triples one's chances of surviving a heart attack. Like CPR, QPR is an emergency intervention for someone experiencing a life-threatening crisis. QPR is easy to learn and easy to remember, but it takes courage to overcome our fears about reaching out to help someone who may be considering suicide. Research also shows that where QPR is widely taught, suicide attempts and deaths decrease. Just like CPR, QPR requires quick, bold, and informed action. Because suicide, like heart attacks, remains a rare event, we must train hundreds to save one, thousands to save hundreds, and millions to save thousands. There is an old Welsh saying, "No great misery goes unspoken." When we have a toothache, we tell people. We don't hide our pain. But because of the stigma and taboo around the word suicide, many people considering suicide don't speak plainly about their suffering. They fear our rejection. They fear that if they say something, we will ridicule them or make fun of them. As a result, people thinking about suicide often use indirect language. They hint at what they're thinking of doing. They send us coded messages, and they suffer in silence. Called suicide warning signs, QPR training teaches you how to recognize these warning signs, quickly decode them, and then question the person in an informed and compassionate manner to learn if they are considering suicide. Just as talking about physical pain helps diminish it, talking about suicide with someone willing and able to listen reduces psychological pain almost immediately. Trained QPR gatekeepers are merchants of hope, and hope helps prevent suicide. Millions of people have now been trained in QPR. Rigorous, independent research studies support QPR as effective, and thousands of personal stories assure us that QPR is saving lives. When you use QPR, not everyone will be suicidal. Some people are simply stressed to the breaking point, but they still need help, help you can give. Please note that you cannot put the idea of suicide into someone's mind. People are either thinking about suicide, or they're not. The fear of putting the idea of suicide into someone's head is a myth, a myth that keeps us from acting when we should do just the opposite. QPR is a universal intervention for people in pain, whether they're thinking about suicide or not. While it takes a special courage to overcome our fears, we will teach you how to ask about suicide and to offer hope through listening. Listening is the power tool that restores hope in the hopeless. We know you can do this, and we will show you how. Preventing suicide, it's what people do.
So, we talked about the Stop the Bleed kits, and the fact that the only thing that would keep us from utilizing them is we're not educated in using them, or we're afraid of how to use them. The same thing with QPR. We're afraid to ask the question. We're afraid to probe, because we might put the idea in someone's mind, and the research says it's just not accurate. And so what we've done is enabled our staff to watch for signs, and then ask the questions, and refer them when appropriate. The booklets that you all have actually have some basic questions in there that people can ask, and you can be roundabout. You can ask if they're feeling sad. Are you feeling down? Or you can just be straight out and ask them. Are you thinking about hurting yourself? And the research says you're not putting the idea in their head. What you're doing is you're just confirming if they need additional help or not. So again, every teacher, fifth grade and up, throughout our entire school corporation is trained on this. All of our new hires are going to be getting the training this semester, so we'll have 100% compliance by Christmas. Now, with regards to self-harm, we also have another means. We have the means for all of our students to reach out. Now, this was implemented in late 2018, but we have some numbers here. We had nearly 5,000 activations of our Stop it Anonymous reporting app. Now, as you all know, it's a reporting app where someone can make a report, and we can reach out for additional information from them. Mental health concerns and suicidal ideation has been one of the main reports that we get. Now, the main report is conflict amongst students, but it helps us diffuse that. And I can tell you, I can say with all confidence, and you can't necessarily measure 100% when you're talking about prevention, but I can say with absolute confidence that we've saved at least one life by implementing this app. My guess is we've saved more than that, but I can say with absolute confidence that we've had at least one, and that's made the entire thing worth it. We have school resource officers. That's nothing new, but this person is. That is Blake Lidle, and he is a new SRO to our high school this year. He started late spring last semester. Our partnership with Carmel Police Department is fantastic. Another thing that this group has done this summer, which was a little bit new for them, was conduct a building assessment. So every building in our school corporation had an SRO go through the facility looking specifically for safety hazards, and then we need to address those safety hazards. And it's really good training for them and really good information for us. Now, of course, they're more than just a law enforcement officer in our buildings, and I'm not going to minimize that. I think from the events of last weekend in El Paso and over in, was it Dayton?
Dayton.
We realize that having a law enforcement officer with quick-response capabilities can be extremely important, but they're more than that. They're also a counselor to students. They're someone that they can reach out to. They're a teacher with regards to safety and other measures around the community. And their mentorship and their ability to focus on school safety is immensely important. So, I'm extremely happy with where we're at with some progress. So, I'm extremely happy with where we're at with some progress, but I'm going to be very frank with you all, we have a lot of work to do. Like, we have a lot of work to do. What we're really talking about with Dr. Beresford's motto this year is Carmel Clay Schools is the best at getting better, and we're going to get better. There are still going to be improvements in our safety plans. There's going to be improvements with regards to our facilities. We're going to continue to strive to be the best we can possibly be. With that in mind, one of the things I feel that we need are more school resource officers. I think we should have one in every building to facilitate, A, the law enforcement capabilities, but also the triad of mentoring and teaching our students. I think we need to continue to address access to mental health services. Our school corporation is 16,000 strong. That is larger than the majority of towns in our state. And when you have a population that large, you're going to have students with immense strengths, and you're going to have students who have some struggles. We need to be able to address those struggles if we're going to be the best that we can be. I also think we need to keep an eye on what's next with emerging technologies. I'm never one to look for a gimmick, but I think it's extremely important that we keep an eye out towards what's developing with regards to school safety. If there are things that can help us with our access control or with students, we need to be aware of that, or even notifying parents. Any questions for me? Yeah?
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything that you keep doing and have done for our schools and our students. I feel like we are very much on the road to everybody being very, very, very safe. The school's safety specialists, those are trained at the state, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that's not something that we do on our own?
Nope.
Okay. And Parent Resource Center, are we getting information out to the parents so that they know that it's available on the website?
We are, and we need to continue to do that. I think one of the things that I believe pretty strongly in, and I know Dr. Beresford has said this many times, is kind of a drip-drip philosophy. We need to promote it, and then rest and promote it again, and continue to do that, and be timely with that. And so that's something that we're going to continue to do with social networking and with our own messaging app to parents.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I was looking for the vaping video to show it or to explain it to family members.
Yeah.
And I had trouble finding.
Yeah.
So, I think it's important for people to understand that that's where everything is located.
Yep, that's great feedback. And we maybe get that on one of our main pages, too, for a quicker link.
Okay. And then the Stop It App, if there are people in the community that would like to be able to access that, do people know how they can do that? I mean, I've downloaded the Stop It App, but I can't get into it.
Yep. So, you have to have a specific code to a specific school. And the reason we haven't opened up community-wide is because it's going to keep us from getting a lot of false reports. And by having it school-specific, we can identify exactly who needs to respond to it and kind of what that area is. So, the parents should have access to it, and that information is actually going out tomorrow morning to all the parents of students with their particular code, but the community at large, no, we don't have access to that.
Okay, so if a grandparent, let's say, notices something, that person should tell the parent, and then the parent will notice by the school?
Yep, yep. If they want to stay anonymous, or anytime, they can call me, of course.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, along that way, I mean, we had the perfect example at our retreat, where we had the email that we thought was an anonymous report, and it turned out not even the district.
Different Carmel.
So, I mean, that's something that...
Yep.
...not reacting to whoever they think they're contacting, they're contacting the wrong person.
Yep.
Katie, a question?
Yeah, so, back to the safety specialist, to confirm, we're only by law required to have one?
That's exactly right. By law, we have to have one for the entire corporation. We actually have one in every school, and beyond that, all of our SROs, we have at least one in every school administratively. Our nurses are looking at doing some of that as well.
And the Parent Safety Academy, what happens after they do their initial training?
Yeah, great question. So, we've talked about kind of unifying them for a project, but we haven't identified what that project would be quite yet, and kind of biding our time with what that process would be. I don't have anything in mind for them, but we do have all of their contact information. And actually, when they complete the program, they fill out a form at the end that says, "Contact me in the future or don't," because some of them may want to do it and not be involved in something in the future. So, I have the list of graduates who are interested if we go further with it. I just don't have that project yet.
The reunification, one thing you didn't talk about, and you can tell me that there's a reason why you didn't, was how to get the kids from the one place to the second place.
Yeah, exactly. So, it won't be a secret, we're going to use a bus, or multiple buses, obviously, and probably running constant routes. The key to it is, we will have to be very cautious on when we announce where we're going, because the minute we do that, we won't be able to get our buses through, because the traffic would be so intense.
And there's something else that I forgot, but I didn't write it down, so I'll come back.
That's okay. Okay.
Going back to the Parent Safety Academy, is there something we want to do regularly every year, like the explanation program?
Absolutely. In fact, we have some dates already picked out in October to run the next one, and as soon as we kind of get those confirmed, we're going to push that information out to the community.
And for the school safety specialists, how do they assist the SROs every day and through the reunification process? And do they have badge, say, a specialist, so in emergencies that people, students can ask them for advice?
Yep, great question. Now, they don't have a badge, but what they really offer us is with regards to our planning and coordinating. We need their input as we roll out a safety plan, because it's no good if, a lot of them will look good on paper and sound good at central office, but when you implement it at the building, it just doesn't work. And that's really what their key is. So, they have training, so they have a nice knowledge base and a really solid baseline, and some of them well beyond a solid baseline. Some of them are pretty advanced. So, when we roll out our safety plans and as we update them, that's where their input is key. The other thing is, you mentioned working with SROs. They are extremely ingrained with our SROs. They are really like, our safety specialists are the go-to safety person within their building. Most of them are assistant principals, although we do have a couple of principals who are trained as well, but they really integrate with our SROs, especially when they're talking about planning and facilities.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have lots of people that are trained. What about our substitute teachers, or those who are coming in that will be working directly with our students in the event of an emergency?
Great question. So, we're still working on that. But what we have done this year is every classified and certified staff member who is hired on is going through an initial training with myself and Sergeant DJ Schaff, who's our SRO supervisor. So, they're all getting that at the corp level, and then at the building level, they're getting additional training. Now, we're still working out how to do that with substitutes, but it's a great question.
Another question, and it seems probably fairly... The picture that you, the template that has the after-hours?
Yes.
What we are, what somebody is to do. Is there a place on there to identify where it is supposed to be posted in the event they get mixed up and there are different places there?
Yes, exactly. So, as we rolled that out, the key is for each building safety specialist to locate the exact place to put that. Now, what we've guided them is to put it in all the areas where they're going to have outside agencies use, so our gyms typically, a lot of our LGI rooms as well, by the doors. And that's why, as you may not have seen on there, it's to be customized, depending on where it's placed.
Well, actually, and I saw that customization, what I didn't see customized, the place that actually put the location that was supposed to be placed in the event they get mixed up?
Yep. So, that was rolled out in the initial push for the document itself. We gave them that guidance. Now, what I haven't done yet is audit those, so that'll be coming.
I know you said we're working progress. We've made a lot of progress on the vestibules and events you care... Where are we with that? Do you know how many we have left? Will that be completed if we posted this here, or how is that timeline?
Yeah, so all the basic construction is up. We're still working out some wiring, et cetera, but I think we're going to be, we'll be at 100% with all of that, I'll say before, and I guess I don't want to give an exact date, because it's kind of at the mercy of contractors, but it'll be soon.
Oh, super, excellent. QPR, which I'm very excited about. I've had upper-first day training for suicide tendencies and how to help students. How long is this training? And is this something that the board can participate in, or is it a class that we can offer for people who are interested?
Yeah. That's a great question. It's two-hour training, and it can be, the board can attend, and in fact, Stephanie Whiteside, our mental health coordinator, who is absolutely fantastic, has put together parent nights for them to come and get QPR trained as well. And those will be rolled out fairly soon, once she gets the dates and locations confirmed. So, yeah, we want the community trained. It's, I think it's great training, and it's important training.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, as a graduate of the Parent Safety Academy, I am going to give it high marks every time and encourage people to go. It was a fabulous two nights, and like you said, the ability for parents to give feedback and say, "This would be my concern for this age kid," is invaluable, and for me, learning was invaluable.
Good.
Second, I noticed on the screen about the SROs that we have NASRO, and I know what that is, but can you explain that?
Yeah. Yeah, great question. So, NASRO is the National Association of School Resource Officers, and that training's extremely important. In fact, it's required by the state of Indiana if we fund any of our SROs via grant funding, because the training's important, because you can't just take any law enforcement officer and put them in a school, because different age kids have different challenges and require a different approach from law enforcement. And so what this training does is actually talk to them quite a bit about de-escalation and how to work with students, and there's a lot of talk rather than a lot of action as an SRO, and that's extremely important that it comes through the NASRO training.
Okay, and so, from that two things, the first thing you said is funding, so I want to, you know, put out a budget. One of the things that the referendum, we hope that this system passes, would be to help fund not only SROs, but all these things that you've already talked about this year. Is that accurate?
Oh, that is accurate, yep.
Okay, and then also, not only are SROs great in Carmel, but they're leaders nationally in NASRO, and I believe we've got people that have been president nationally and have even trained officers in Chicago and other places, what they're doing and what the program is.
Absolutely. So, Sergeant DJ Schaff, he is, I think he's the vice president of the National Association right now, and he's done training all throughout the country. The majority of SROs actually in our own state have gone through NASRO training, and much of it has been actually through Officer Schaff. Now, he's an extremely valuable resource, and I'll tell you what, I rely on him every day.
Okay, and then, thank you for the Stop the Bleed Kits. I have two questions on it. What is, do they expire?
Some do, these do not. So, there are types of kits that actually have, like, blood clotting agents. These do not have that, and so these will not expire.
And then, I'm trying to think where I can keep it, where it's with me the most, and can it be in a car where it's hot and cold and...
Absolutely can, yep.
Any other questions?
We did talk about tonight, so with the intruder drills there at schools, what kind of education is given, because you can't tell everything, I understand that, to parents, and especially to elementary school parents who, you know, they have kindergarten or first grade who comes home and says they hid a closet, like, what kind of information and education is given to them?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, every time we do a drill, we're working to put out information about what they did during the drill without digging, drilling too deep, and the other means is the Parent Safety Academy. That's really their best bet if they want more information about the why we do certain things, not necessarily the what, but the why and the concepts behind it.
Thank you.
I might add to that a little bit. You know, when we do train for Pallas, it's developmentally appropriate, because obviously, an elementary student would not, their primary job is going to be to follow directions of their teacher very closely, whereas when kids get older, like in the middle school, or in upper elementary, middle school, of course, high school, they're able to defend themselves and make quick decisions and do a lot more. So, the kindergarten nurses are not getting the high school training.
Right.
I was just going to put in another plug, Parent Safety Academy. I know we have used, well, you and Dr. Beresford have used members of the Parent Safety Academy to evaluate programs that we will be showing and delivering to our students, and so I thought that was a really great use of the parents to offer the app.
That's right. I actually forgot to mention that. You'd asked, have we used the Parent Safety Academy graduates? To evaluate a program that we're looking at rolling out, we actually used them to view the pilot of that, and that's where those invitations came from. Yeah, so it's a great group. They get some, I hope, decent training, and when they show a certain amount of investment, we want to keep them involved.
Any questions? I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Woodward, for your work.
Thanks.
I got to tell you, when we hired Dave Woodward, I was ecstatic, and I thought, you know, that our bases would be covered and we'd be on a really strong trajectory, and I had some expectations, and he covered all my expectations probably in the first three months, and has taken us to another level. And he is one of those guys that he wants to be the best and better, because we've got a lot of business spinning, a lot of things going on, and the layers continue. And I also like to point out that there are layers that you will never know about and you will never hear about that exist, and we will never be public about those things. But there's, the multiple layers of school safety is essential, you know, to keep our kids as safe as we possibly can. And we're paying attention to what's happening locally, we're paying attention to what's happening nationally, and we're doing all that we can, and we'll continue to work towards that. I was talking with somebody the other day, and they were asking if school safety is a priority at Carmel Clay Schools, and I said, "No, it's not." I said, "School safety is a core value of Carmel Clay Schools. It's in our founding principles, that you have to have a school environment that is safe, and that's physically safe, that's mentally safe, that's academically safe, it's identity safe." There's this layer upon layer to have a safe environment for kids to learn and grow. And so, kudos to Mr. Woodward and his team, and we're going to keep working, and as you can tell from tonight, they're one little screw, and they're going to keep us in the best possible place we can be.
Thanks, and I appreciate all of your support. Really do, thank you.
So, next on the agenda is the superintendent report. So, it looks like you're ready to do it right here.
I am. Is this mic working okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Check, 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 is that better? Yeah, we had a really, a really good opening meeting with our administrators, and this year's theme, of course, is at Carmel Clay Schools, we want to be the best at getting better. And so we kind of ran with that theme, and we're real pleased with it. And I tell you what I saw this last two days, has been a lot of just that, folks have been doing different things this year from last year, and upping our game and getting better. I do have quite a few things to share with you. And the first one I want to talk about was that, just that I wanted to report to you that all the steps that we had to take in order to have our school safety referendum placed on the ballot have now officially been completed. So, everything is complete, all the boxes are checked, and it will be on the November 5th ballot. And I wanted to just kind of report to you and remind you what that question is, and what it's going to say on the ballot is, for the next eight calendar years, immediately following the holding of the referendum, "Should the school corporate impose a property tax rate that does not exceed five cents for each $100 of assessed valuation, and that's an addition to all other property taxes imposed by school corporation for the purposes of funding the following at Carmel Clay Schools?" So it's, it's not to exceed, you know, the five cents. And then the three things were the corp, the employment or compensation of school resource officers for all the school buildings. So that would be paying for additional, you know, 11 to 13 school resource officers. Programs to address youth-specific mental illness for all students, so to support a mental health programming. And then the third one was professional development programs. For teachers, administrators, and other school employees designed to improve school safety and reduce violence. So that, all those boxes are checked, and it will be on the ballot. And so I wanted to report to you that, that that's going, we are going to put a factual webpage on our website, so that people can see. State law prohibits us from promoting a, you know, either a yes vote or a no vote, you know, with homeschool equipment, school websites. But it does permit us to give factual information, which of course is pretty normal and smart. So we will be putting that factual information out pretty soon. Wanted to send a message out to the parents who are tuned in tonight, to please make sure your contact information is up to date in your Power School Parent Portal. Also, in that, that portal, if you wanna receive text alerts from CCS, you can text "yes" to 68453. That's text "yes" to 68453 on your mobile device, and then that will get you, you know, get you set up in there. One of the things that's vitally important in, in school safety and emergency situations is to have good contact information. And sometimes people move over the summer, there's a lot going on, they forget that they need to, you know, go to the school and check those addresses, or they'll change to a different cellphone number. And, you know, it's hardly any home phones anymore, and so you change your cellphone number, make sure you get to the school, and get those all updated. You can do that right there in the Power School Parent Portal. You may have heard that Carmel Clay Schools' food service is going green, and so that's exciting news, that at West Clay, College Wood, and Clay Middle School, they've made the switch from using plastic utensils to metal. So they're gonna be doing reusable silverware. This is a pilot program with the goal of having all of our schools move away from plastic and going green, so we're kinda excited about that pilot program. You heard about tonight, the Parent Resource Center. I'm really excited about that. That was a, an idea that we came out with, with, you know, with the difficulty, and there's so many activities, hard for parents to meet for different meetings and, and, you know, having events. But if we were able to do some videos that were short and very informative, that parents could go there when they have time. And so we've seen some new ones, like school bus safety, and Stephanie just did a wonderful job on her tips for transitioning your student back to school. But yeah, we're gonna keep that going, and Dave talked about that quite a bit, so I won't go on and on about it, but we're kinda excited. And we'll be watching the analytics of that, see how many parents take advantage of that. Also, wanted to throw out a congratulations to our Teacher of the Year, Amanda Dillon, and she was announced as a top 30 finalist in the state of Indiana for Teacher of the Year. So once again, our Teacher of the Year has already made the first cut, and I was watching that, some things on social media, she had Bearsville, you know, 2020 is in full force. And that's just, she's just a pretty special person, special teacher, who's impacted a lot of lives. And we wish her well and good luck as she proceeds and progresses in that, that process. You guys may not have known this, but the Carmel High School Champions Together Team won the Special Olympics of Indiana Plane Pull. That's pulling an actual plane, in the high school division. They pulled an 80-ton Boeing 757. And I don't know how far it was, but I know their time was 7.97. But, so our kids can flat-out haul a plane. And that's for Special Olympics, and it's, I'm just so proud of those guys. We've just got some tremendous kids in this district, and, but that's a new one for me. I've never had a champion plane pulling team before, so an 80-ton Boeing 757, so it's pretty impressive. And along that same lines, we have a kid who we've heard about before, because he's an incredible wrestler, he's named Suez Chundy. And, you know, he's like, I think plays fourth in the state's medalist in wrestling this last year. And he brought home the gold, but it wasn't in wrestling. He brought home the gold in the International Biology Olympiad. And what happened was, he studied, you know, all year long, he's probably been studying since he was like, you know, six or something. But he's been studying for this, and he, you know, a lot of us taking tests and that sort of thing, so he was wanting to qualify for the camp, they do a summer camp, and he did qualify as the top 20 or top 25 to be in the camp. And then from there, from that camp, you had to be chosen to make the team to go to, I think they were Budapest. And so he traveled across the ocean to compete, and he finished like in the top 20 or 25, and was a gold medalist in that. So, you know, when we talk about student athletes, this is a student athlete. So kudos to him and congratulations. We'll try to get him here so you can meet him, and he's a pretty special kid. And then, then we're kinda transitioning to why was my bell ringer? Which was, the first step of it was, I just want a big thank you to the Carmel Fire Department and Carmel Police Department. Everywhere I went on the first day, there was a fire truck, and there were firemen out there. And it's a tradition here in Carmel, that they're there with their lights, and they're welcoming the kids, and they're really alerting traffic that, school's in session, slow down, be safe. And I just love our, our community, love our, our fire guys that were doing that. And then there was a police officer at every school welcoming the kids. And so we had a lot of extra officers out there, and they were high-fiving and fist bumping the kids, and it was just real special. So just love our community, and, you know, and the care that they take, you know, to make sure that everybody knows the school's back in session and can keep our kids safe. And also that they're just loving on our kids. It's a great thing. But here it goes. Day one and day two. So I'll start with day one, it was a magnificent day. And we welcomed more than 16,500 kids. The August numbers was 16,616 on the roll for day one. And I was able to make it to 13 of our 15 schools, which was a new personal record. I made 11 last year, so I bumped it by two, so you know, so I'm trying, I'm really working to be the best at getting better, trying to get a little better. So that was really special to, to get to all those schools. But I just saw some amazing learning going on. Social-emotional learning, academic learning. I saw innovative things going on. There was, you know, typically I'd go and I'm looking at they're doing like the name game, or they're, you know, doing some, you know, some get-to-know-you things. There was some ice breaking going on, but a lot of them were just jumping right in and getting some, some, some real thought-provoking lesson planning going on. So it was pretty, just pretty amazing about how much learning was going on. Several folks from the ESC here were deployed all over the district, were helping out in different areas, and really about anywhere, they needed some help. And so everywhere I visit, I saw other, other folks, even from this office, that were, you know, there to help and support that day. And then I visited my final two schools today, and they were just crushing day two. And I started out at Woodbrook, and the whole staff came out, and they were doing bus safety talks before the children even got off the bus. And they were explaining how the bus is a part of the school, and that we have to treat the buses like part of the school, and they were telling them how to be safe on a bus. And it was just, you know, just, just very, very cute, you know, because those little people are really cute. But also important information, and I love the connection with the transportation, the bus drivers connecting with the teachers, and it's like a little family there. And then I rolled over to Prairie Trace, where there's a lot of, a lot of action going on there with the Hawks over at Prairie Trace, so that finished out my, my trek to all 15 schools. So just an amazing thing, and, you know, I couldn't be prouder of our family, of our team, and how they do it. And I wanted just to share a message I sent to the staff yesterday. And this is kind of a tradition of mine, but I always have the bus radio on, on the first day, and really about every day, and I wait for it to get quiet. And yesterday, it got quite, actually pretty early, and it had been quiet for quite a while by the time I had time to write my little message, but I put, it was now 5:30 PM, and the bus radio's been quiet for quite a while. And I said, it appears that over 16,000 kids came to school today, with the vast majority of them riding a big yellow school bus that arrived safely, and for the most part, on time. And yesterday might have been a record for buses being on time, in the morning and in the afternoon in particular. I said, I had the pleasure of visiting 13 or 15 schools, saw some amazing work going on in classrooms, hallways, cafeterias. I went through EduCare to see our babies through our four-year-olds, and what an amazing program that is. In our parking lots, there was some great things going on. And some say that, you know, that the first day is kinda like herding cats, but I disagree. I said it was more like an anthill, because there were a lot of lines, and there was a lot of jobs. There was a lot of things going on, it was very organized. Maybe it was organized chaos, but it was very organized. Each student arrived and had classes with real licensed, and I would say awesome, teachers and staff, who met them with enthusiasm, genuine smiles, and you could tell they just loved their kids. Then they had a tasty lunch, which was a good day, and most of them were pretty hungry by the time, I saw a lot of happy people at lunch. And then they had some more time with their awesome teachers and staff, and before they arrived safely home again, with most of them riding on a school bus. Now, all that adds up to a successful day one in my book, you know? And if we get right there, a little time with, in class, you know, a good meaningful lesson, a lunch, another good meaningful lesson, and a ride home, that's a pretty good day. But, you know, and just I appreciate the way our people serve the students and their families, really our community that way. But I wanna make note that this only happens by the collective efforts of over 2,000 staff members. And they make up our, our family here, and there were several changes made across the district to make the first day safer, smoother, less stressful, just better than our last day one. And the complexity of making this happen is no short, nothing short of a miracle. You know, I don't know that, you know, people think about it or really have a notion of what it takes, the complexity of what it takes to make school happen on one day. But it's a, it's, it's just amazing work, and hours upon hours and hours by many, many, many people, that all fit together. And I'm not sure if the rest of the world understands what we do and how it takes to make school happen, but I want you to know, I can be prouder of our Carmel Clay Schools' team, because they made it happen. So I closed my, my note to them by saying, let's lock arms and do it again 181 more times. And let's make this a special year for our students to learn and grow. So I'm a real proud superintendent right now of our, our family, and we weren't perfect. We had some bumps along the way, but the bumps were corrected really quickly, and we're, again, just working to get better. So that concludes my report. Big bell ringer, have a great opening of school.
Well, thank you for that report, and thank you and all our staff for what they do on the first day, the second day, and the 182nd day. Do we have any questions for Dr. Bearisberg? I have two questions. One is, if we were getting reminder texts last year, and our information has not changed, do we need to do anything?
I do not know the answer to that. I would imagine that you might need to do that, as far, are you talking about academic alerts and that sort of thing?
No.
No, you shouldn't need to do anything, anything different for that.
And then second question, on the language for the ballot on the referendum, are those three items that the funds are gonna be used for actually part of the language?
Yes, what I gave to you is the exact language, and that language actually was taken right out of Indiana code, because this is a new type of referendum, this is a new tool that the legislators gave us. So, yeah, it's right out of code, and it's, that's the exact language is what I shared with you.
And so then, why we're talking about that? So the code permitted us to do 10 cents on every $100 of assessed value, and is there a reason we're only doing, or why are we doing 5 cents?
Well, I worked with Mr. Rick Michael there, and we were doing some baseline information on what we needed, and so we didn't wanna collect taxes that we don't need. So, and we've set up to five, you know, 5 cents, and the maximum is 5 cents. So if we don't need 5 cents, you know, we would need to, to collect 5 cents. But that's through a budgeting process. But that is the, the number we came to that would be, would give us what we need, you know, right now, and then also give us some margin for the future. And so that's, that's, you know, why that language was put at 5 cents. And we know that we could've went for 10 cents, but we wanna be prudent, and that was why that decision was made.
And then one more. So out of those three items, are they from a list of possible things that we could use the money for, and we felt that those were the most important things and what we needed to do?
Yeah, that's actually right out of code, so those were, that was the language from this. But within each of those areas, you could see there's a lot of flexibility as to what, you know, what can be done to support mental health, what can be done to support school safety, and then attorney, P710. Of course, the SROs. So it's, this type of referendum, this new type of referendum is very specific and limited to what you can spend that money on. And so, and those were the three major areas. They did give some examples, like, and, but that's, we're focused on what we need.
Thank you. Any other questions? Katie?
Just to clarify, so the, the money can only be used for those three things only? And so if they have extra, can't be used for billings, or salaries, or anything that like that, correct?
Correct, yeah. Unless it's school safety related.
Yes.
So it could be used for school safety people. And that's why the, you know, that's why that money can be generated, to do a funding stream for our school resource officers. So, and, but there is some, a lot of leeway in those areas as to what you can do.
And you did mention that we couldn't necessarily tell people how we'd like them to vote, but we are permitted by law to have information out there. So we're posting information about this on our website? Okay. Is, on our off-time, board members are allowed to discuss the referendum and talk to people about the referendum? And I believe we're allowed to promote it? Is anybody else allowed to do so?
Yeah, I'll probably just defer, when we post the website, we've got all the dos and don'ts, because there are a lot of rules about that. I can promote the referendum, but not on school equipment like this microphone. And I can't do it on a website, and I can't do it on school property. And that board falls under those same rules, and they'll share those rules with you too. But it's important that everybody does things the right way. So that's why whenever I report to you anything about the referendum, it's all factual. And when we talk about voting, it'll be whether you vote yes or you vote no. This is information, you know, so you can be informed, so that whether you vote no or you vote yes, you'll have the facts that you need to make a good decision. And we're allowed to do that by law, which of course is, you know, one of the principles America's based off of. So what we wanna do is make sure everybody has a factual basis of what, you know, what exactly is on the ballot. That's why I read the, you know, word for word what the ballot had. And then, then people can vote their conscience, you know, whether they wanna support that or not. And so it's, it's for yes and no voters both, that's information for them to use. Some of the off-school grounds and not using school equipment, you know, we can, superintendents and school board members and associates and assistant superintendents are able to do some promotional things. And, and that's part of the law as well.
I have another question unrelated to the referendum. The Parent Resource Center that we will hopefully have posted someplace that is a little easier to access. What other type of resources will there be? And the reason I ask is, we had, you had worked with Courtney, and you put together a really nice weather flow teams, that little infomercial, which I thought was very helpful, and lots of people really enjoyed it and had a part better understanding of when and why we close schools. I think that'd be great on the Resource Center, and I'm not sure where we're housing some of those other types of things.
Yeah, kind of our, our vision for the Resource Center is to just be a one-stop-shop for really everything. Matter of fact, we even have a piece on there that if parents wanna suggest a topic for us to explore and post some information about, they can actually just put that in there, and we'll, we'll see what we can find out, you know, even on those different topics. So it's not gonna be limited just to like school safety and those sorts of things, it's gonna be wide open to about anything. We had a suggestion the other day about putting some things out the parent portal, you know, I can go in there and work that. And that's something, another thing we could do, probably a pretty easy, little quick video to give parents, you know, the information that they need to navigate that. So when we say, make sure you update your address and phone number in the parent portal, you can say, well, you can go to the Parent Resource Center, hit the button, and it'll show you how to do that.
Is it only videos? Or can there be like documents, flyers?
Yeah, yeah. It can be, but we can do, you know, we can do really anything we want there. So, but the idea is to just have a one-stop-shop. So, but the idea is to just have a one-stop shop where parents can get information they need. And they can always call us too. But, you know, it is, a lot of times, parents, you know, you get the kids put to bed and everything, it's about 10, you have no one to call, and you have a question. So hopefully you can go to the website and click on a button and get some help.
All right. Once again, thank you, David, for a great presentation and for all you've done for our district in just under a year, coming up on the first anniversary. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So good.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Great. Great meeting. Thank you.